Good evening, I'll call the October 11th, 2023 meeting of the Manitou Springs Planning Commission to Order. First item of business, I'll call the role Commissioner Graybill.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Commissioner Casey.
Present.
Commissioner Storm.
Present.
Commissioner Armstrong here. And I am Commissioner Delich. Uh, next would be the approval of the minutes of the September 13th meeting.
Um, oh, thank you, Chair Delwich. So we have a new addition to staff who is going to be working on minutes from here on out. We're working on getting her trained up and as a result, we don't have minutes to review or approve for this meeting, but they will be on the next agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, then I'll move on. Next item is public comment on non-agenda items. And this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to come up and talk for three minutes about any issue that's of concern to you that, but nothing that's on the agenda and um, if, if anybody would like to now would be the time. Okay, seeing no takers, we'll move on to our uh business meeting. I'll start by describing the process we use. Um, I'll call an item for consideration and the planning staff will describe what the request was and what their findings and any recommendations they have. Following that, we'll allow the applicant to speak and state their case. And following that, we'll close item for consideration and um we will um deliberate and will either vote to approve, deny, possibly table something if we need more information. And I'll note that Megan Day just came in, so she'll be seated as an alternate. So um with that, are there any conflicts or ex parte contacts to disclose? Okay, great. And we'll move on. Um, first item is variance 2304 311 Terrace Place.
Thank you, uh Chelsea Royston for the record. And before we get started, I do want to make a note for the recording and for anyone who joins online. Uh, there may be some disruptions to our video feed in the online platform, uh which will be apparent through the recording as well. Uh, they'll be able to see the presentation, but they may lose access to the cameras. And we've had some other technical glitches, but we're hoping that those have been resolved. So um, just wanted to make everyone aware of that. So uh variants 2304 at 311 Ter- uh Terrace Place. Uh, Will Boddington is the owner and applicant. He is requesting to reduce the side yard setback to four and a half feet where seven and a half is required. The site is owned general residential and is approximately 4,000 square feet. It is on uh the corner. It's uh at the intersection of, I believe, Oak and Terrace and um as such, it is a legally non-conforming lot. Um, it does not meet our minimum lot size. So the applicant is uh requesting this uh essentially to construct a second floor addition uh that will uh use the same footprint as the original existing bill uh footprint of the house. And um, so the house is also legally non-conforming and uh already has that four and a half foot side yard setback. So by extending the wall up another level of the building, uh he would technically be increasing the non-conformity of the building. However, he wouldn't be, I, I guess, expanding or increasing the um or decreasing the setback, excuse me. So here we have a site plan. Uh, the single story house, as I said, is existing and um already has a more shallow side yard setback. And by using the existing footprint and load-bearing walls, um, the applicant feels that this will increase the structural integrity as well as the aesthetic of the addition, whereas if he is required to keep the full seven and a half foot for only the second story of that portion of the building, it could create kind of an, an inconsistent appearance. Uh, for our approval criteria, for variances, we uh section 18.06.4.2E states that uh the variance may not result in development of areas at risk of natural hazards. Um, this area has not been identified as being at risk of natural hazards. Again, it's already developed. Uh, no grading or other earthwork is proposed. And number two, no adverse impact will result on adjacent properties. So while the proposed variance will increase the non-conformity of the structure in a vertical measurement, it will not further reduce the distance that the structure is set back from the property line. Uh, the adjacent house, um, or excuse me, the house on the adjacent property is um setback well in excess of the required seven and a half feet on that property, on that shared border. And so I, I don't believe that this would cause any sort of um negative impact to that property. Our eligibility criteria for variance, uh here we have the slide that we saw at the last variance. Um, staff's analysis is that this application does meet four of the criteria, uh the first four. And um so being that there again, i- is a legal non-conforming lot and does not meet the minimum lot size. So this uh proves to uh create an unnecessary hardship for the owner. Uh, all of the adjacent lots are much larger and um would create an, an ability for the owner to expand horizontally along the first floor, whereas this uh restricted lot and relatively small footprint of the house kind of creates it so that we're having some of those glitches. Um uh, it reduces the area in which um construction of an addition is possible on the lot. Uh, there have not been any design alternatives identified again. Um with it being uh a corner lot, there are two front yard setbacks and so developing an addition on the first floor would likely result in also needing a variance. Uh, the enforcement of the provisions of the L U D C deprives the applicant of rights enjoyed by a majority of other properties. Um, again, this lot is noticeably smaller than nearby lots and that limits the buildable area. Uh, several of the other properties also have full second floor uh stories. So this um smaller lot, smaller house. And this is really the only uh potential development available in the lot. And um, the need for the variance is not the result of actions from previous property owners or an otherwise self-imposed hardship. This small lot is part of the Plainview addition subdivision, uh which is um dates back quite a ways. And so the light, the lot was likely drawn around the house rather than the house being built to suit the lot. Um, so what that does is kind of creates just a tighter envelope than we would typically see in a standard modern day development. Um, the owner does not uh meet the cra- or the application does not meet the criteria that uh there is a disability affecting the owner, uh which would impact this application and it is not in a historic district. Should the planning commission find it appropriate to grant the variance, staff does not recommend conditions. And here are the proposed motion language. This concludes my presentation.
Any questions for staff?
Okay, fine. Oh, um, Dave. Did you get any feedback from the neighborhood?
I have not received any comments from the neighborhood.
Okay, the applicant like to step to the table and start by stating your name and address for the record and you have to pull that mic real close and hit the little button in the middle and the green light will turn on.
Testing, testing. Here we go. My name is Will Boddington and I live at 311 Terrace Place.
Okay, well, the floor is yours. If you'd like to add anything or you comfortable with the staff recommendations. No, you can just leave the button on. Just leave it green.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, that all sounds good. That's the idea. Um, bought the place for myself and my fiance and stepson. And then um we found out we have a baby on the way. It's a two bedroom, so uh it's a great thing, but we weren't expecting it. So now the idea is to make a little more room um and build a master bedroom on top of that uh part of the house. So just, yeah. That's the idea.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, well, do you have anything else you need to add or if you're done?
I, I don't think so. Uh, my favorite color, no, I'm just.
Well, that's, yeah, as long as it's not red, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Red's okay, just not purple.
Yep, turquoise.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you.
Hey, would anybody in the audience like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no takers, I'll close a public comment portion of this hearing.
I support this. It seems reasonable.
Yeah, I'm totally on board with the justification for this, but again, I just want to highlight um uh last time as it came up, that second criteria. I think if you look at this very strictly, and maybe I'm wrong in doing that, but I, I'm not sure that it quite meets that second criteria. Um, I think we're kind of backed into a corner with that language, the way it's written. Um, so I guess I'm a little conflicted on what to do here. I support the project in general. But I think if you really read that second condition, there's always the possibility that you could make a smaller master bedroom and that that would have the need for that a smaller variance. And I think when you look at that, there are alternatives that we haven't explored. Um, so I just want to point that out again as a problem, but I think we're going to keep seeing it. Not saying I wouldn't support it tonight, but I think again, we're in a dilemma of, do we strictly follow the code or do we take this on a case-by-case basis, i.e. not follow the code? So.
David?
I hear you, Justin, and that was my question too. It came out very clearly last week. Um, I'm a little bit confused if it's already on the first floor uh encroaching on the side yard. Um, it seems to me uh this is not a change, but I will rely on the planning department uh saying that it is and uh needs a variance. And I would move that we would approve a side yard variance request for four and a half feet at 311 Terrace Place with the finding that there are no other reasonable and practical uh design alternatives.
I'll second that.
Okay, any, if there's no more discussion, we can vote all those in favor. Okay, so that's passes unanimously. Yeah, okay, let's uh move on. The next item is concept plan 2301 12 Ruxton Avenue.
Thank you. Uh, just pulling up my staff report here. Um, concept plan 2301, uh again, is at uh one to one, it's technically 124 through 132 Ruxton Avenue. Um, it's been referred to throughout several applications in the past as 128 Ruxton Avenue. Um, it just has multiple units in it, so um we'll continue to refer to it as 128 Ruxton Avenue. Uh, the parcel is currently zoned, uh split zoned with the western half zoned general residential and the eastern half zoned downtown. Uh, it is approximately one-third of an acre. Here you can see the existing zoning uh with purple being the downtown zone district and orange being the um general residential zone district. We also have our future land use map from Plan Manitou, um, which that uh graphic is awfully zoomed out in Plan Manitou. Uh, the circle represents kind of the area that we're looking at where you can see that um the future land use map mimics exactly um what we have for existing zoning. Um, where the eastern half of the property is again designated for downtown and um the western half is for um residential type uses. So um unfortunately, I was not able to determine why this property was split zoned. Um, it predates nearly all of our records. Um, so at some point, this may have been multiple um properties, but we just don't have a clear record of why that is. Um, as such, uh there will be future applications required with this project. A concept plan and the point of a concept plan is to evaluate the proposed development prior to the applicant undertaking detailed planning and engineering work. Um, by evaluating the broad idea of the proposed development, staff in the planning commission uh can highlight areas of concern to help the applicant determine if the project is feasible or if they uh need to shift focus at all. So those future applications that we're um currently reviewing are rezoning where they would be rezoning the uh western half of the property to downtown, so the whole property would become da- uh downtown zone. Uh, there would also be a subdivision, a major development plan and a material change of appearance certification, which is heard by the Historic Preservation Commission. All of the other applications will be heard as a packet. Um, if, if it's the will of the planning commission tonight to um encourage this application forward. Um, those applications would be elevated to the highest review authority um for any of them, which in this case is city council. So as a package, the rezoning subdivision and major development plan would be heard by planning commission and then by city council. Um, for approval criteria for uh concept plan, we have that uh, the concept plan is consistent with the general purpose and intent of the LEDC. Uh, the purpose statement in the LEDC uh states that is to promote the health, safety, order, property aesthetics, quality of life, economic Economic, social, and environmental interests of the present and future inhabitants of Manitou Springs. Uh, one method to fulfill this purpose is by encouraging the construction of new buildings and and new development. Redevelopment and remodeling to be as much as possible in keeping. With the general existing characteristics and it is staff's opinion that the subject proposal is in keeping with the area's characteristics of mixed use. The. I apologize, I glossed over some of our details here, so um the the application. The core of the application is to have um three short term uh three guest rooms. And uh I believe two uh commercial rentals or commercial units, excuse me, on the um. Eastern end of the lot. And um. Because the property is seeking to be rezoned to downtown, those three guest rooms are referred to as a hotel. You can see whether that may alarm some folks, however, it is just three short term rentals. If it were to stay in the general residential zone district. They would be referred to as short term rentals, however, being that the rezoning is um being sought, it will be referred to as a hotel. Um, and then uh with commercial units as well. So um. Again, uh, it's staff's opinion that this. Is in keeping with the area's characteristics. Ruxton Avenue is a mix of commercial residential hospitality land uses. Already and so this uh this really does fit that current development and historic development. Um, our second finding or in review criteria is that the proposed land uses densities and intensities. Are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable zoning districts. The proposed land uses, which are hotel and retail, are permitted by right in the downtown zone district. The future land use map uh recommends downtown slash mixed use uh following the current zoning. Outline uh that we discussed earlier. Three, whether the conceptual development will result in a higher risk to natural hazards and geologic hazards. Uh, there is no proposed expansion of the building and um. The only site work proposed is repaving an area that's already used as paved parking on the uh. West end of the. Of the building, so. The proposed project will not result in a higher risk to the natural or geologic hazards. Number four, the proposed development is consistent with the dimensional design development in all other standards of the proposed L U D C. Uh, the proposed development is consistent with these um standards. Uh, the building itself currently with the existing zoning is legally non-conforming and it does not meet setbacks. Uh, for the general residential zoned portion of the property, so by rezoning, we will actually um eradicate those. Non-conformities and bring it into uh conformance. And number five, the proposed development provides adequate mitigation for anticipated adverse impacts to surrounding neighborhoods and the city. No major adverse impacts are anticipated with this proposed development. Revitalization of an underused building will always increase traffic. However, the proposed development will comply with parking requirements. One mitigation measure measure that has been integrated into the design is uh designing the parking lot so that it doesn't require. Cars to reverse onto or off of Ruxton Avenue. Uh, so that has already been discussed with the applicant. Um, and they made those recommended changes before bringing this concept plan uh forward, so. Parking standards uh for retail in the downtown zone district. Um, have no minimums, however, hospitality uses are typically uh one parking space per guest room. And this um. This design technically does. Comply with that. One of the spaces is um an ADA accessible parking space. And so it's a little unclear right now at this point uh whether. That parking space counts, I guess, towards. One of the uh guest room stalls, however, one of the guest rooms is also ADA. Um, accessible and so that um I believe is the intent of the developer to create that um. Cohesive between the ADA parking and the ADA um. Guest room. So um. As I stated, this is uh just a high level kind of here's what they're proposing. Uh, there will be several applications in the future. The major development plan is one that will have the most detail. About um amenities on the site um and any sort of. Other requirements that uh may be determined by the L U D C. Um, again, the major uh the material change of appearance certification that will be heard by the HPC will. Deal a lot with the aesthetics of the building. Uh, it's been indicated to me by the developer that. There's no intent to change the aesthetics of the building, rather just to kind of um freshen it up. Uh, part of that is re- uh replacing windows, which may be historic. So those are some of the details, however, a lot of it has um is still in in development. So uh with that, should the planning commission find it appropriate? To approve the application, staff does not recommend any conditions at this time and um. Here is our proposed motion language. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for? Staff?
My question is on the um the one change, which is paving the parking. Um, it seems that that would actually increase the stormwater runoff and the pollution into the creek, which is. Immediate, I mean, if you walk off the corner of that parking area, you fall into the creek, so it's a direct runoff into the creek.
Uh, so the the parking lot is already paved and um. Are you, okay, uh, so maybe we should ask the applicant then. Um, it was my understanding that the. Uh, that parking lot was already paved. Um, though. As I stated, any sort of increased impervious area or anything like that would be reviewed during the development plan portion. Uh, so the future applications, but uh that's absolutely a question to ask the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Uh, i- if it is paved, it's like ancient and you can't really tell because it's it's covered in dirt. I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, so hence the repaving, but yeah, I do understand.
Why would changing the zoning? Eliminate the definition of a short term rental?
So um, short term rentals at their core are. Uh, residential uses in residential zone districts. And so by changing the zone district to a commercial uh is it district uh like downtown, it's. The same use, but it's referred to as a hotel rather than short term because it is um. Multiple units that are owned by one entity for commercial purposes rather than. A short term rental, which is typically uh owner occupied.
I have a question. I'm not exactly sure what we're approving here. This still has to go before historic preservation.
So um, this is a concept plan, which is uh I believe a new type of application in the L U T C. Oh, it. Maybe it was just underutilized um in in the past, but um. Concept plans are really just kind of greenlighting the idea of the project without um. Having the developer, I guess, sink a lot of money into uh designing all of the details without knowing that whether or not the use is even. Um, palatable to the planning commission and community. And so this is just a broad level overview of. The proposal. Um, it hasn't been heard by the HPC yet and these other applications will still come before. Planning Commission and City Council once they're submitted and um. They have been submitted, but they're still in review by staff, so they're not ready to be heard um at public hearing yet.
Thank you.
Again, on the natural hazards, the um. I happen to know because I live across the creek and my property abuts the northern side of this entire property. Um, it's very, very steep across the creek and there are patios, there's like a balcony for the u- multiple units. In the back, so the balcony is over the creek. If someone, some resi- you know. Hotel guest flicks a cigarette off the back of that balcony, it hits our slope. It goes up, that's very steep slope very quickly because um. Well, it, that's the nature of fire and a a brush covered slope. It hits our uh cottage on our property. And then it goes right above the cottage to our neighbor here, Pete and his house, which is Emma Crawford's former residence. Um, and uh, you know, a whole neighborhood full of uh historic wood. Buildings, so um. I just want that to be taken into consideration. I- is that any, you know, the fire risk, is that part of the natural hazard consideration?
Um, yes, so um. Natural wildfires, I believe, are a concern and fire mitigation is typically reviewed for all building permits. That being said, a a building that is being used that has been vacant, you know, vacant buildings have inherent risks as well. Um, and so just having more folks around those risks, I believe, change, but um. There can absolutely be stipulations um such as those we have for short term rentals where we have to outline. Where we have the uh the applicants outline their um kind of fire safety guidelines and rules and. Um, those items, so I I believe that could be stipulated in future applications. Um, is that correct?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hannah Van Den Wagen for the record. Yes, so we could. Uh, stipulate future applications with uh like a patio of some kind. That no smoking is allowed on the patio or something of something to that uh to that extent. Uh, we also do review a wildfire risk assessment as part of the development plan. And that really just looks at landscaping that is prone to wildfire and uh for fuels. And so that would be part of the development plan review as well.
If there's no more current questions from staff, I'll have the applicant step up.
Hello, okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Larry Salazar. Uh, I'm with Kim Lee Horn, uh, the applicant. Uh, on behalf of the owner. Um, which is Aim Ventures. On, I guess, just kind of going into further of the concept plan. Uh, rezone, um, we have done some uh wildfire mitigation review. Uh, we do have a natural resources team that is currently looking at the area in regards to. Your concerns for fire, but that is definitely um include or will be included within the. Sorry, the uh MDP, MDP, the master development plan, so.
And um, you you have the floor, whatever you'd like to add or describe or um go over.
Yeah, um, so with this, with the concept plan, it's basically what we're looking to or what the client is looking to. Fully develop, revitalize that building um and up have the upkeep of the natural or the historic preservation. Uh, with that, with minor modifications, obviously. And with the approval of um of y'all, um, be greatly appreciated and. Hopefully I'll have a. Little bit more interaction with all of you with any questions, comments, or concerns uh down the road with the future applications.
Any questions for the applicant?
Could you explain uh? Where the separation from the commercial uh to the hotel would be?
Of course, uh, yep. So the two, if you can see the concept plan, the two areas to the east. Which have two uh X's on them. Those are the two uh commercial areas for that will be for lease. And the remainder will be the three lots uh on the west portion without the X on them.
Thank you.
So with only three hotel units, it means that there's obviously not going to be any staff on site. Is there any provision, do you think, that will be made for oversight, security? Video, audio, I know some Airbnbs, like they have a a decibel level measurement and they have. You might have other security measures. Has there been any thought given to that yet?
Not that I have spoken with the architect on this project, but I can address that with him. Uh, for the upcoming um any other meetings or any collaboration efforts you'd like to have on this.
Anything else?
Mike, just one comment. Um, in your, in your application. You you repeatedly say that you want a short term rental that just that verbiage alone might. Bite you down the road, so you might want to clarify that to motel or hotel. It's just a formality, but I that's kind of the elephant in the room in my eyes.
Okay. Well, I'll make those adjustments.
Can you describe uh where the owner is incorporated?
He is within Colorado Springs. Um, he has uh properties um that he's done similar, not exactly this, um similar projects. In uh Pueblo, Colorado Springs, um just kind of the Front Range corridor between the two cities.
That that's a good point. Um, and yeah, that's something you might want to consider in the future too, is if there's an issue. Who do, who do, who do we call? Who does, who do the neighbors call?
Yep, and um we'll have his information provided uh with the future applications and everything. Um, I do believe that it will also be on, sorry, on El Paso County. Um, uh, the El Paso County Assessor, um, just as. An additional format of outreach on who to contact. Um, but yeah, uh, within the application, um, I'll have to um speak with Chelsea on how we want to. Address that for owners in regards to um anyone who's renting a hotel space.
Well, is, I assume there's going to be a property manager of some sort?
Yes.
That that information would be more valuable, actually.
Okay.
Looks like we've exhausted our questions for now, so you can sit down and we'll open this up to the public. We may bring you back if we have more questions. Okay, the public hearing is open now to the public if anybody would like to comment on this. I just, you know, step, step up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nancy Kowalski. I live at one four five Ruxton Ave, which is approximately across the street from this. Proposed area. Um, one concern I have, I don't, at one time, Ruxton Ave was a lot of commercial. This has changed somewhat. It, to me, it's more residential now. We have a few businesses down toward. Main part of town, but they're um eight to five businesses. They're not evening businesses. They're not open late. And I think that with a motel, uh, people coming and going late at night, people that we don't know. Um, if there's a parking area right there, which you're gonna have to have some sort of safety lighting, which. You have a lot of bright lights and in a residential area, that would be very disturbing. So I don't mind the resi- I don't mind the retail part of it. I think it'd be great. But I am a little adverse, a little negative against having a motel where, number one. There isn't somebody there to really watch what's going on and if things get out of hand from the short term rentals is. You mentioned, Mike, um, long term rentals might be a little bit different, but I'm thinking about how the neighborhood would change. Because it's mostly now just residential.
Okay, um, these are all good points. If if we go forward with this. And there will be like a rezoning hearing and a major development. Plan hearing and that would be a time to. To articulate those concerns if this goes forward.
Okay.
And you know, there are ways to mitigate the light. I appreciate that. I I hate light. At night, so.
Well, that would be very disturbing to all of us around, plus like Pete behind and stuff, because that light would be very, very bright and.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that would certainly be a factor in any, anything that goes forward. So. And of course, we'll, you know, this is going to take some time to see where it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, uh, I had a comment to her, sorry.
Oh, to the applicant, I mean to the, okay.
It's my understanding, and Hannah, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but with the new um. Zoning code, um, I think there's definite restrictions on what lighting can. Uh, how it can impact adjacent properties, like it's not supposed to. Impact them, and I would encourage you to talk to the planning department about whatever requirements those might be.
Anybody else like to comment on this?
Uh, my name is Andrew Nicholas. I live at one twenty one Ruxton, the Twin Spring Building, which is uh across the street and just down a block. Just down a set from here. Uh, the previous use of this building, when it was occupied, there were two folks in there, Tommy and a lady at the end. And she ran a um secondhand shop and he had kind of a antique shop. Just with those two kind of commercial or retail uses. They had that parking on the end, which you described. I don't think it's paved. I think I agree with you. I think it's a dirt. Spot, but regardless, there was a lot of problems with parking, even with just two retail spaces. And as a resident on that block, I can tell you that lower Ruxton. We've had to fight really hard and luckily with Kevin at parking, we've had some successes with him trying to maintain that residential parking there. It's very hard, especially in the summer, when you have a lot of visitors that just. Try to gamble on not getting a ticket and take up our residential spots on the street. But I encourage the planning commission to really look at the fact that many places on the other side of the street. Are apartment complexes like our, we have four units. The one just to the east of us has, I think, nine units. Many of them are multiple bedrooms, so lots of people. We have tons of residents that use that. Limited amount of about nine parking spaces, because there's only parking on one side of the street. Uh, because we have no off street parking at all. I know if you look at this too, please encourage the petitioners here. To let you know what they're doing with the other half of their property. The other side of that creek is, I don't know if it's the same amount of square footage, but. There is a parking lot right next door that's a private parking lot that uses the entire lot for parking. They have a bridge that goes over the creek. I'd like to see them tell you what they'd like to do with the other part. They could put their own parking back there if they wanted to. Or if that's something you guys would like them to consider doing, that would really make a huge difference, I think. I'm not sure how many spots could go back there, but maybe as many as ten parking spaces could be added to a really tough parking area. That's something I just encourage you guys to consider as they apply. I don't think I have anything else other than parking.
Right, thank you.
Excuse me, what, what area are you talking about adding parking?
My understanding is that this lot, yeah, is it it's basically a square or a rectangle. They're talking about what they want to do with the front half of the lot, which is adjacent to the street, to Ruxton. But the entire back part there is undeveloped. It's actually a bit of a slope, I think. Um, yeah, but there's a lot that they could use the other portion there up behind. So the creek is right behind, if you move up, you, that's a bridge right there. That's a bridge. That's a parking lot right next to their building that they. I don't believe these people own that lot. It's owned by the people across the street, actually.
Unfortunately, this application is restricted just to the property that is outlined here. Um, I just want to make it clear to the planning commission and I apologize for interrupting you, but um.
Is that back part not part of the same?
It's not part of the same lot.
It's not.
Yeah, um, yeah, excuse me, excuse me. Um, let's, we're getting off track here. You know, there will be several steps to this process. And any parking requirements will be considered when the applications come forth. So we can't, it's not our policy to design. A project for an applicant and and you know, you can give feedback to the applicant and and he's hearing what you're saying, but.
Great.
Like, we're not really getting, we we're not in a position to engage and start brainstorming on what should or shouldn't happen with. Any other property.
I appreciate that, and my apologies. I made an assumption, I suppose, that that back piece was part of the same uh application. So that's my fault. Regardless, I am just encouraging the planning commission to really take a look at how their proposed use. Would affect parking for the rest of the neighborhood. So that's my encouragement to you to assess as they come to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would anybody else like to weigh in on this? Okay, well, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Question. Um, I have a question for staff. I, we've lived through. A couple of concept plan conversations like this. And maybe this is in the, the new code that I didn't catch, but typically historically, it's just general chit chat. And the developer is saying, this is what I'm thinking. What are your concerns? I don't remember having to semi sort of formally approve. It was just more conversation. They're just planting the seed. So I guess my question is, what if we deny this? What happens?
So um, this came about actually after a conversation that I had with the applicants. Um, they were well on their way to designing the project and. It was at my recommendation that they came in with a concept plan to have these discussions beforehand. Um, if this use is not palatable to the planning commission. It's my understanding that they could still apply for those applications. However, um. I'll I'll let Hannah jump in. It looks like she has something.
Uh, thank you, Chelsea. Um, so with the concept plan, what we're really, we're not formally approving anything. Because we do have subsequent applications. So this isn't like an automatic green light uh to move forward. But it is, does give a level of assuredly to invest in the, in those detailed designs. So uh, the concept plan, though we're not giving approval on. The specific number of parking spaces or anything like that, what we are giving approval on is an idea. But there is still potential if you feel like the major development plan or rezoning doesn't meet those review criteria. To not, I don't want to say change your mind, but for when additional information becomes available. For uh the commission's will to change essentially. So this is just a high level look of generally, we would accept a mix of commercial and hotel uses here. Uh, understanding that future applications will come forward with those specifics. But if those specifics don't meet the review criteria, then um. There would be the option for a different uh vote. If that makes sense.
I think I understood all that, but the question really is, what if we, what happens if we deny? So he, the application, so I mean, because that's literally one of our choices here, which is kind of surprising. And in not any ill will, I just don't, I don't remember seeing that historically. But if if someone were to say this doesn't fit and allow like denied, it's not stopping anything. It's just basically our opinion.
That's a great question or question, Commissioner Casey. Thank you for um rephrasing for me. Um, so the commission does have the opportunity to deny a concept plan, but that doesn't necessarily preclude an applicant from uh. Maybe uh hearing the reasons that it was, the denial was based on adjusting those things and moving forward. With the subsequent applications. So denial is definitely an option. There's, this is not an automatic approval by any means. Uh, but the applicant, even with a denial, has the right to continue to seek approval of those future applications.
Okay, good. So it's, we're not really approving or formally denying anything. We're just giving our thoughts preliminarily.
So I believe this was a code change. So historically, you're right, it was a conversation and there was no vote. On it. So with the new code, that's not the case. It's a decision. Um, by the planning commission, you have criteria, but to your point, what happens with the denial, nothing. They can still move on with their future applications and still move forward with their future development. The thing that I would say might affect those future applications, if you choose to deny. Is the general conformance criteria when you're evaluating those future applications. So if you're evaluating a future application, you say. Hey, we denied this concept plan because X, Y, and Z issue. I'm seeing that those still aren't addressed now, so I'm not sure it's in conformance with the criteria.
Okay, great, perfect. Thank you.
So I think this kind of plays to something we were talking about last month, where we were talking about vacant buildings. Right? We've got these vacant buildings. How do we get people into them? How do we revitalize that part of the city? And I think this is a good plan. I mean, it it brings in um. It gets something refreshed that's there to historic building. It brings commerce to an area that is just dead at the moment. I hear the concerns about uh the hotel aspect, but you could have. Somebody could have an all night tattoo parlor in one of these as it stands right now and. You could have impact, or if you don't have a hotel, you could have any other business that might be running. You know, eighteen hours a day out of each of these bays. Um, where maybe a more cohesive, one owner, re- refreshed storefront. Well managed would be an asset. I certainly think redoing an area and maintaining the historic character is a real positive thing.
I um couldn't disagree more. I think that in unattended motel. On basically a residential street is is an awful idea. And I can't, I mean, the things that can go wrong are just endless. And there's, there's, it's not the highest and best use of that property. It's, it's trying to fit a round peg in a square hole. So. If there is an option to deny this, I would be the first to sign up for it.
Yeah, you know, my, my thoughts, you know, I'm sort of agreeing with that. You know, historically, this was what um? Three residential units. Was it three residential and two commercial or was it two resident?
I actually don't have those records on how the units were individually used, um, just how the property is zoned.
Okay, so currently forty percent of it is residential and sixty percent is commercial. Is that correct?
Approximately.
Yeah, so, you know, first of all, regarding parking, they are zoned, they are in the downtown zone. So um, we have no minimum parking requirements. You know, that's just reality. That's just how it is. The two residential ones, you know, as they sit today, they're residential. And and if all of a sudden we rezone, then yeah, it'll be open to be. Hotel, un- unmanaged hotel. And so I'm a little nervous about that, but the reality is. The part of the property that's red, that's commercial, it will be commercial regardless. You know, we can't take that away. So I'm accepting the fact that there were, there could be commercial activity there. Now, it can be, you know, we do have regulations that, you know, all night. Tattoo parlor, I'm not sure that that would be something we have no recourse over.
Um, I appreciate both of your your thoughts here. Um, but I do think we need to take off the vacancy solution from the table. Because the fact of the matter is that the previous owner um had residents in there, long term residents, renters, and he kicked them out. Um, and that might have caused some homelessness, because these were affordable housing units. And regardless of what they were zoned, no one was able to keep commercial in there, and so people would live in there. Um, because it, it was the only way to keep those units. Occupied and and productive in some way. Um, the Ruxton corridor is really tough commercially because of the lack of, you know, parking and and there's, there's not the street traffic you get on Manitou Ave, et cetera. There's a lot of vacancies right now commercially on Ruxton. Um, and and we just continue to lose affordable housing after, you know, just unit after unit, building by building, it's just disappearing. And this is another example. Um, so he, he kicked residents out, possibly making them homeless. And uh, because he wanted to fix it up, which meant adding another layer of paint to that building. And which is all that's holding it together and uh, and and to sell it. Um, so I don't see anything wrong with the proposed, you you know, the concept plan. In regards to our land use development code, um, but I do want to raise these other concerns. Uh, that include, no, vacancy is not the issue here. Yes, it's been vacant for a while while he tried to sell it for a high dollar amount. Um, but that's why it was vacant, is only because of that sale. Um, and kicking out affordable housing um renters, so. And and I do share the concern on the unattended. Um, and that's a use change, right? If we change the zoning, it means to allow the change of use to. From a short term rental, which is a residential use that requires somebody to be living on site. To oversee, you know, the property so it doesn't get out of hand. And we're not flicking cigarettes off and causing lots of light or noise or setting off firecrackers. You, we all know how these things can get out of hand or not. Um. So that's a, that's a change of use that we need to be cognizant of. That is, that comes along with this zoning change. I, and and so that's, that's going to come with some impacts on the neighborhood, is that unattended um hotel units. The change of use, just calling the same thing. Uh, hotel units from short term rental, which would require oversight from onsite residents.
Could I uh make a clarification? Uh, it is not currently a permitted short term rental. Uh, so they are not beholden to those rules. And I apologize for the confusion that I've caused by calling it, by comparing it to short term rentals. I guess um, I had heard some feedback that calling it a hotel may have also scared people. And um, so trying to really just call it three guest rooms. Uh, I, I do um. I, I do also want to point out that the change of use is the impetus for the major development plan. So that is not necessarily something that needs to. It's being considered as its own on a whole with the major development plan, rather than just as a part of the rezoning, if that. Just to clarify that that gets its whole own application instead of criteria.
At this point, I don't feel comfortable voting to deny or approve. Uh, one thing, it seems like there's a, there's not very much information. If I had one comment about the concept, it seems to me that freshening up with a coat of paint. Or maybe replacing some windows. Seems grossly inadequate to me, and I think that comment is probably irrelevant. So anyway.
Other thoughts, Justin?
I would just say, I guess, support is too strong of a word for me where I am right now, but um. I don't think I know enough to flat out deny it. Um, I'm intrigued to see where it could go, I guess. To borrow the term, uh, conceptually, I agree with this. It is a concept plan. So I I don't see the risk in uh approving it tonight and seeing how it develops, so.
You just made me more comfortable, just.
But to be clear, we don't have to do anything. We're not, I mean, this kind, this conversation could just stop and our job is done. We don't have to vote.
Well, I mean, don't we have to do one?
Hang on, maybe I, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, let me clarify. Maybe I misspoke. You do have to vote. That's a new change in the LUDC. So previously it was just a conversation with no vote. Now it is a vote. You must decide and you have criteria on the matter. So you have your same options as always, approve, approve with conditions, deny or continue. I see more confused faces. Okay.
Well, I, I think we should take comfort that even if we had a unanimous denial, for example, it's not stopping anything. So the, the show goes on. It's just a formality.
Megan?
I mean, I think if the question on the table was what is the highest and best use? I think from what we hear from our neighbors is that it would be long term residential. That these would be renovated, updated and be made available for long term residents. Be that as a condo or a rental unit, but that's not our choice and that's not what's on the table. And so I don't feel comfortable denying either because it seems like it complies with the requirements in the land use development code.
Yeah, I, I guess my concern is that if, you know, the, the, I, I see, it's kind of mixed where we are. Some of us are the feeling that short uh hotel would be a reasonable use in that location and some don't. And my concern is that as this goes forward, the, the big hurdle will be the rezoning. And, and that, that's, you know, a two step, a three step process. You know, comes to can, commission twice possibly, and then it goes to council where there, you know, there could be a lot of sentiment developing against having a hotel in that location. So that's, I guess the applicant is hearing our, our concern and discussion and will factor that in with whatever they do and however they invest. That, that's the biggest problem I see is, you know, what, what message we're giving with our approval or disapproval? And I think we're, we're conveying a lot of information just as we discuss it.
I'll make a motion. I will uh make a motion to approve the concept plan at one twenty eight Ruxton Avenue based upon the findings that request meets the review criteria for granting a concept plan as set forth in city code section eighteen point zero six point four point one zero point E.
I'll second it.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, then let's vote. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed?
Can I abstain?
No. You, unless you have a conflict, you can't abstain and.
Is a conflict being next door?
No, you, you don't have a financial.
I don't, I don't. Um, I guess my question is, you said there are criteria by which we are evaluating this. Is that the entire land use development code? What are the criteria?
They're on the screen.
Okay, thank you. I vote no.
I can help you if I'm, I, I.
Uh, let's think, Megan, you were gonna, you haven't voted yet.
I vote no.
You vote no. Okay, so I believe this was a four to three vote.
Should I say why?
Oh, I think that'd be great.
Well, item number five, anticipated the adverse impacts to surrounding neighborhoods. It's gonna have a huge negative impact.
I don't believe number three has been sufficiently addressed either. There are geological hazards. This is in the floodplain. There are steep slopes across the, the creek that are at high fire risk. And, and again, on number five. I don't think that the plan shows adequate mitigation of impacts.
Yeah, um, what is the procedure? If I want to change my vote, can I do that?
Yeah, do you want me to walk you through the process of, okay, so first we'll need a motion to reconsider. And so a motion to reconsider has to pass by two thirds of votes. So what you're doing here is saying, I motioned to reconsider the motion that you just passed, just to state the item number. You need the second two thirds of vote and then you can revote on that same matter.
Okay, so I, I move to reconsider.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor are reconsidering? Is that two, is that two thirds?
I was hoping you might know I'm not a math guy.
Well, what was that? Was that four or was that? Yeah.
I think it was five, seven.
Oh, that's easily two thirds.
Okay, thank God. Someone knew.
Okay, so a motion, so we do the revote of the same motion.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, so that, that's close. And again, you can go forward as you want. And just for the record, the reason I changed my vote was Megan and Mike both pointed out the number, what was it, number two and uh, number three and number five really are um significant.
Um, could I just ask Mike to repeat once again the adverse effect? You were very emphatic.
Well, I was referring to item number five that it, that I, I think that this is going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Because?
Yeah.
Um, because it's an unattended basically twenty four hour come and go as you will on a, on a residential street. Now, I granted, it's, 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 well, that's not final one. I dig myself into hold, but. And again, this is just, we're not, this is just, how do you feel? The show will go on no matter what we do here.
Thanks.
I, the reason I opposed it is because I don't feel like a hotel is part of the neighborhood. Long term rentals are part of the neighborhood. Commercial rentals are part of the neighborhood, but people who come in to spend the night or a week are not part of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, um, we should move on to the next item, which is uh budget and goals for twenty twenty four.
Uh, thank you Chair Delitch. Onto something very different. Uh, so we started this conversation uh last month where I'm uh asked the commission to consider what they would hope to accomplish in twenty twenty four. Uh, this does get presented to the city council as part of their annual um annual budget review, all the uh boards and commissions uh do this presentation and it just helps explain uh what they're hoping to do with the money as well as what they're hoping to do in twenty twenty four. So this is, it's literally four slides. It's real quick. Uh, but this is a draft of what that presentation could look like. And I did take the liberty of drafting some goals for the commission to consider. But please, I will not feel uh upset if you want me to add, delete or edit any of those items. So we start the presentation just by just uh describing who's on the commission. Uh, we also go over what the twenty twenty three goals were and that was to implement the new LUDC, assess if the LUDC is getting the desired results and if any adjustments are needed. I believe that um the planning commission is doing an excellent job of doing just that. Uh, a brand new code is a tough thing to uh fully predict what problems may arise with every individual application. And just like what you witnessed tonight, maybe there are some adjustments to the concept plan that need to be made and like what we reviewed last month with the variance criteria. So I drafted those items based on that sentiment. Uh, so twenty twenty three accomplishments of the planning commission, I believe to be, begin implementing the new LUDC. Uh, you did review a six month update from staff and made recommendations on future adjustments. Reviewed and approved the major development plan for the Carnegie library edition. That was a huge project and there was a lot of information in that packet. Uh, there, that also has a large impact for the community. So I do believe that to be an accomplishment of the commission. Uh, we also, we haven't counted up the total number of applications just yet, but any number of applications heard by the planning commission is an accomplishment. It's what the commission is uh dictated to do. So twenty twenty four goals I drafted to continue to implement the new LUDC and to continue to assess if it's getting the results that you would want of new development, of redevelopment and things of that nature. I also drafted participate in and make recommendations for the twenty twenty four planned Manitou major update. Uh, this, I'm not sure how much detail I've uh given to the commission just yet, but DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, did award the planning department a grant to update Plan Manitou. And so uh we're right on schedule to meet that five year time, timeframe that's dictated within that plan. What we're hoping to do with the Plan Manitou major update is uh reaffirm that the goals and directions are still where, and the sentiments of the community are still where uh where Plan Manitou describes them and make any adjustments as well as updating data. What we're also hoping to do is build in a strategic plan element. So uh we as a city, not just the planning department, are strategically taking on initiatives that make uh logical sense for the resources that we have uh in matching our capital improvement plan, budgets and things of that nature. So a little bit less of um throwing out a spaghetti at a wall as opportunities arrive, uh arrives, but to um plan for when opportunities will be available and when staff has capacity to take those things on. So planning commission will have a huge role in that project. We are planning to kick it off uh in twenty twenty four. Alan has been a part of selecting a consultant, which I will be in touch with you about soon. And uh throughout twenty twenty four, we'll need that constant feedback from this commission as well as from city council and reports and commissions. So I drafted these goals. I, I feel like Plan Manitou is going to be a big part of twenty twenty four as well as making sure the LUDC is still getting the results that you would want them to get or get that document or to have that document get you. I apologize. Um, as far as the actual budget, uh we are not proposing to decrease or increase the planning commission budget. So we are planning to keep it steady at fourteen hundred dollars. That does include enough to send a few commissioners uh to a conference or to attend online conferences or webinars as well as pay for some training um for individuals to come to planning commission and give just some brief training. Uh, with that, uh, that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to hear any feedback or any thoughts that you guys may have had over the last month about twenty twenty four.
Isn't accessory dwelling units coming up at some point?
My understanding, and this conversation happened before uh, before I started with the city of Manitou. So I'm getting this information second or third hand. But my understanding is that accessory dwelling units were not pursued because at the time, the city council was not interested in pursuing them. So that is not on the docket at this time. Uh, but that is something that would come up through Planned Manitou if it's something we needed to revisit.
No, the plan looks good to me, your goals.
Thank you.
I think um an item you can look into the accomplishments, I brought it up before, and I think it's a huge one, was the improvement of the, the four or five gallon buckets that we got painted on Manitou Avenue. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mike.
And also um, uh, as far as the budget, two, two things. If you want to donate our funds that we never spend to some decent um equipment in this room and get out of this never ending cycle of poor media, it's, I know it's not your issue, but it's, it's, it's gotta end.
I know. It's, it's tough. It's tough to work with because when it works, it works great.
Yeah.
But it's the times in between.
Or something is amiss. And another thought too is um just the thought is, is when, when, when new people come on board, they're just kind of thrown in the water and hope they swim. Um, maybe we could hire a, a local person to do a quick orientation video that, that we could have and then edit down the road. Cause I, I don't think there's any training. Yeah, so that's an orientation video would be my suggestion.
Yes, I, I believe at the very least, we could put together like an orientation, sit down with any new commissioners for any of our boards with like an information packet on what maybe Robert's rules of order are, what the planning commission's charge is, things, things of that nature.
In, in addition to the formal training, I believe we're organizing for all of our boards.
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
I think an orientation video for old members would be welcome.
Any other, anything else? Okay, I think we're, we're done then. We're adjourned.
I do have one quick, super quick.
Take it back.
I'm sorry. Um, I just wanted to recognize that October is both um code enforcement appreciation month as well as community planning month. Uh, so go out and appreciate those things as you would normally would throughout your lives.
So can we send lunch to the planning department someday or?
Uh, we would never turn down food.
But, but please no more donuts. My, I, I can't afford a new wardrobe anymore.
Okay. Then I guess we're adjourned.